Good morning, everybody. I have 10 o'clock, so I'm calling this meeting to order. The legal voters of the town of Hardwick, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Hardwick Elementary School in said town of Hardwick on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 10:00 in the forenoon to act on the following business. The polls for Australian ballot voting will be open from 9:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and if anyone needs special accommodations, there's a phone number, but no one's there, but Tanya is over there and could assist you. The first article on the warning is to elect a moderator to govern said town meeting for the year ensuing, and as a reminder, no nomination needs a second. And when you make a motion, please state your name first for the record, because I hate to admit it, but I see faces out there that I can't put a name to. And then that way, we have it recorded properly. So what is your pleasure?
Steve Shepherd asked me to nominate Orrise Ainsworth as moderator.
I have a nomination for Orrise Ainsworth, which is me. Is there any other nomination? Don't need a second. All those in favor of electing Orrise Ainsworth as town moderator for the year ensuing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and I thank you very much. I truly enjoy this. And our state representative is here now, Mike Southworth from Walden, so if there are no objections, we can allow him to speak. He's assured me it's going to be brief, and then we will continue with our meeting. Does anyone object? All right, I'll turn the mic over to Mike.
Thank you. That worked. Thank you. Just wanted to take a few minutes to give you updates, what there are for updates coming out of Montpelier. Right now, there are over 450 House bills that have been introduced. Very few have made it out of committee and have been voted on at this point. There's still more to come. On average, there's about 900 bills every biennium that come out. One bill that has been introduced and has an extreme amount of support from both the House and the Senate is a bill to exempt income tax, state income tax, on veteran and survivor retirement benefits. This bill has tried to go through numerous years. It has overwhelming support. Right now, it is stalled in committee, but we're hoping that it comes out and we can vote on it and get that in place. Another bill exempting state income tax on Social Security benefits. So many people struggle to survive on Social Security. There are exemptions and limits on taxing, but we want to completely get rid of income tax for Social Security benefits.
I'm not here. I'm not. Someone's saying we can't hear. Sorry.
So the biggest, one of the biggest issues coming out right now is the education funding. Everybody's aware of what's going on with that.
Don't be afraid of this.
There's nothing that has been set in stone. There's nothing that has been solidified for what this is going to end up being like. There are so many moving parts, we have no idea where it's going at this point. The only thing we do know is the proposal of five districts statewide. I do find that a bit aggressive, and I've thrown out different numbers of counties tying in with the technical center districts to try and increase that number and maybe not have it so confusing with only five districts statewide. Like I said, no decisions have been made. Trying to stabilize property taxes and keep funding going and meet the best needs of all the students in the state statewide is the goal, and that's what we're looking for. Public safety, there is a bill, part of a bill, to repeal the Raise the Age law, which treats 19-year-olds as youthful offenders. We need to prosecute anyone who commits a crime like that. From that age on, needs to be treated as an adult. We're trying to find different ways of doing it. Tougher bail laws, hold criminals accountable, yet find pathways to rehabilitation. It's going to be hard to find common ground on this, but we are working for that. The crime rates in the state, we've seen go up. We've got to try to do something to make that better. Housing proposals, there's $50 million proposal to increase homeownership and opportunities in rental housing. One of the best things I like about this is it's taking old abandoned properties, cleaning them up, and rehabilitating them for use as either permanent homes for individuals or rental housing. I think that is a big part of what we need to be looking at and doing. The Global Warming Standards Act, all about environment, all about pollution. There are a lot of moving parts with this as well. There's bills to repeal that. I have reached across to a lot of people trying to find common ground so that we can come with a solution that both protects the environment but also keeps everything affordable for all of us, because as of right now, the mandates are very expensive for us. But again, there is common ground. We have to find it, and we have to work toward it. Lastly, I know PCB remediation is a big issue in town. I have been working on that. I've reached out to a number of the state agencies that have been involved in it. I've reached out and asked for a commitment for reimbursement from the state agencies. The person who makes that final decision is on vacation until March 12th, but the deputy commissioner that I talked to feels that is a feasible ask, and they will get back to us. I know the town has worked very hard throughout this with those state agencies, and I think they're very appreciative of the way the town has been going through on it. With that, I can take a few questions, and then I've got to get going to another town.
Mike's a little taller than I am. Does any constituent have a question for our representative before he departs? Dave Shepherd?
Wait a minute for the mic. Behind you. You'll have to sidestep.
Yeah, if, when, if the funding ever does come through and the bond gets voted and approved in Hardwick, how will that affect Hardwick?
He's talking about the elementary bond with the PCB.
Yeah, so if the bond gets voted in, the state has, you know, told the people of the town, or the school boards that have been working with them, that they will refund, reimburse the money that is spent as soon as they can. As soon as funding's available, they can do that. As of right now, we don't have any idea when that would be, but they are committing to reimbursement for the money spent.
Yeah, I know the bond was carefully worded as energy efficient, but it's really for PCBs.
It's for both.
Okay.
Beth LaCour's East Hardwick. I'd just like to invite you and everybody here to be informed that the Vermont Art Educators Association put up the show yesterday at the State House, and I encourage you and anyone who can attend for the month of March, there's great student work up there. Lots of kids represented from Hardwick Elementary, and there'll be a closing on Friday, March 28th. Everybody's encouraged to attend.
Thank you. I'll make sure to look.
Back to the PCB question. My understanding is the governor has budgeted $9 million for PCB remediation, which won't be enough to cover Hardwick because this school isn't in as dire a situation as others. So just to put a fine point on this, your conversation with the deputy commission was about budgeting more than $9 million so that there'd be enough to cover Hardwick? Is that correct?
No, it's not budgeting in this current fiscal year. It's for next year.
Understood.
But if there are monies that are not expended out of that $10 million appropriation, then Hardwick could have a chance of being paid sooner than that. It all depends on the expenditures out of the $10 million that has been appropriated in that bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Now we will continue. Before we start, I'd like to also get permission for our local employees that do not live in town to have permission to speak if a question comes up so that they're covered. We have Casey Rowell and Amanda Fecto that live out of town. They work in the business office with our town manager. I don't see Chief Henry. Oh, there he is. Mike Henry is from Morrisville, our chief, in case anyone has a police question. So if there are no objections, those three people will be allowed to speak as questions are raised. Anyone object to that? Thank you. I will read the town meeting rules and start by asking the head table to introduce themselves. Eric?
Hi, I'm Eric Rammick, Select Board Chair.
Just a minute, she's coming with the mic. They can't hear you in the back.
Hi, I'm Eric Rammick. I'm the Select Board Chair.
David Upson, Hardwick Town Manager.
Kaylee Galway-Kane, Vice Chair. I just want to say there are lots of seats up front if anybody wants to sit up front.
Sherri Cornish.
Tim Riccadello.
Danny Hale, Selectman.
Mike Henry, Chief of Police.
Tom Fadden rode for me.
Thank you. And Robert's rules are the basic rules of order for this meeting, as well as any Vermont law that might come in. All motions and remarks should be addressed to myself as moderator, and if you're making a motion, please, as I said before, state your name, and if you're making a second, the name is also needed so that Tanya, it can get accurate minutes. Articles must be moved and seconded, then restated by the moderator before debate can begin. For a previous article to be reconsidered, the request must be made before the moderator restates the next article, so that would be after a motion and a second. And this requires the request to reconsider be from a person that voted on the winning side, and I will ask you how you voted, and your neighbors will know how you voted. So we're set there. Articles may have one amendment, and the amendment can be amended once. The voting to proceed from the last proposed amendment back to the main motion, and we can do this any number of times, and eventually, we would vote on the amended main motion if any of the amendments passed. A paper ballot is required for the, we don't elect those now, but it also, a paper ballot can also be requested, and we need seven people to agree to a paper ballot. And debate can be stopped with a motion to call the question, and that requires a two-thirds vote. However, the person making this motion must first be recognized by the moderator and not just hollered from the floor. So if someone is speaking and you want to call the vote, stand, and I will recognize you, and then you can say, "Call the question." The role of the moderator is to explain procedural questions, but no voter should hesitate to ask a question, and if you have a question, say point of order, and that proceeds and stops discussion, and I will ask what your question is. Voters need to stand when recognized. Please wait for the microphone, and again, state your name. A voter will not be recognized to speak a second time on the same motion or amendment until all other voters have had the chance to speak for the first time. If your cell phone rings, please take it out into the lobby.
Can you have a request for more chairs? Can you suspend for a second so we can move some out?
Certainly. I have a request to suspend the meeting for a few minutes. They need to put more chairs out. However, there's at least 20 chairs up front here that are available. I promise not to throw anything at the people in the front row. There's more than that. So those that want to seat, there's plenty up here. Are we all set? If I cannot decide the outcome of a voice vote, a division will be requested and will either do Raise the Hands, Standing, or someone can request a paper ballot. Lunch is not available on the stage, but there is food in the lobby with the Civic Standard, and their prices are by donation. Thank you all for coming today, for supporting me as moderator, and there's numerous groups in the lobby, and they've asked me to have people stop. There's Aware, the Hardwick Downtown Partnership, Historical Society, Neighbor to Neighbor, the Civic Standard, Home Share, and if I missed anybody, they've come in since I was out there. And also, there's also our friendly civic bingo that you fill out, put your name on it, and turn it in. And last year, they had prizes, but I forgot to ask if they had prizes for this year. They do. Okay, so there is prizes for when you get a bingo on there. And I've already given you one because I said point of order. I didn't expect that to come up in the meeting, so I gave you one. Going on to Article 2. OP, did you wish to speak now or during the budget?
About the budget? We'll wait till we get there then. Okay. Article 2, Shall the Town Accept the Town Report Year Ending June 30, 2024? And that's this document. What is your pleasure?
June Hackett said she moved the article. Is there a second? Jean Hackett, I'm sorry. Name, please.
Deborah Hart.
Deborah Hart, is that a second? Is there any question, are there any questions, concerns, or comments in regards to the town report? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the town report for year ending June 30, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. To elect all town officers and school district number 26 directors as required by public laws of Vermont and the Town Charter. Select Board, Town Clerk, Treasurer, Union School District number 26 Directors are all being voted on in the back of the room today by Australian ballot. The first one that we need to elect, and you can find the list of them on page four and five in the town report. The first one up is First Constable. What is your pleasure? It is currently held by Larry Hamel.
I nominate Larry Hamel.
Dave Shepherd nominated Larry Hamel. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Larry Hamel for a one-year term as First Constable, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Larry is elected. The second one is the Second Constable for a one-year term, currently held by Lindsay Osteen. What is your pleasure? State your name, please.
David Upson nominates Lindsay Osteen.
I have a nomination for Lindsay Osteen. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Lindsay Osteen as Second Constable for a one-year term, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Lindsay is reelected. The town agent, last year, we elected Rob Lewis. He has since, is now deceased, so that office is vacant. We need a candidate. What is your pleasure? It's a one-year term. Any office that we leave vacant is up to the Select Board to appoint at their next Anyone volunteer to be the town agent? Dave Shepherd has volunteered himself. Would someone make a nomination? Dave O'Brien has made a nomination for Dave Shepherd for a one-year term as town agent. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing David Shepherd for a one-year term as town agent, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and David is elected as town agent. Surveyor of Wood, Bark, and Lumber is currently vacant. It's a one-year term. Are there any nominations or volunteers? Sir?
I nominate Levi Chase.
Levi Chase? He lives in Crasberry. No, he lives in McVill. I'm sorry. Okay, we have a nomination for Levi Chase. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Levi Chase as Surveyor of Wood, Bark, and Lumber for a one-year term, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Levi is elected. Tree Warden is currently, and I know I'm going to mess this up, Jeffrey Firs for a one-year term. Jeffrey currently holds a position.
I nominate Jeff Fairs.
Fairs? Okay. And your name?
Rachel Kane.
Rachel Kane. Any other nominations? Sorry about that, Jeffrey. Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Jeffrey Fairs as Tree Warden for one year, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Jeffrey is elected for a one-year term. Cemetery trustees for Main Street, Maple Street, Fairview, Sanborn, Hardwick Street, West Hill, and Hardwick Center are currently held by the Select Board. If I read the page right, they used to have their own, some of them had their own trustees, but I understand the Select Board has taken them all over. Are there any nominations for cemetery trustees for the cemeteries I listed? Dave Shepherd nominates the Select Board. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing the Select Board as cemetery trustees for a one-year term for Main Street, Maple Street, Fairview, Sanborn, Hardwick Street, West Hill, and Hardwick Center, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The Select Board is elected. The Fire Department Officers, there's a new group listed on page, where did I find it? Four, down on the bottom of the page, and that can be moved as a group rather than listing every office if you agree, and these are who the Fire Department has submitted as a request to the town to be their new officers for a one-year term. What is your pleasure? Yes?
Are all the people on that list considered officers? I know that one of them, the local county sheriff, is not a resident, and is that such a special quotient you need to allow a department to consider? Is that considered?
Oh, okay. So we, I believe everyone is down through Secretary Treasurer, and in the past, we have always just accepted their slate, and they can hire, they have to hire the Lemoyne County Sheriff. Does anyone object to doing it that way? Okay, then a motion would be needed for the Fire Department Officers. Okay, I have a motion from Dave Shepherd to approve the recommended slate as found on page four. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing the Fire Department Officers as listed on page four, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. And Library Trustees for a three-year term? Can you wait for the mic, please? She's right behind you.
Daphne Kalmar, that's me. I nominate Vince Razzianelli.
Nominate who?
Vince Razzianelli.
Okay, Vince.
There's two more.
Yeah, okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Vince Razzianelli for a one, three-year term on, as Library Trustee, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Vince is elected. Then there's a library, another three-year term.
I nominate Solomon Lew.
Could you spell that, please?
L-E-W.
And the first name?
Solomon.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we have a nomination for Solomon Lew for a three-year term as Library Trustee. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Solomon Lew for a three-year term as Library Trustee, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Another three-year term for Library Trustee.
I nominate Mary Myers.
Mary Myers? Meyer, okay. I have a nomination for Mary Meyer. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Mary Meyer as a Judevine Library Trustee, another bingo. Please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Grand Juror is currently Ray Bellevance for a one-year term. What is your pleasure? Nomination or a volunteer? Dave Shepherd has nominated Ray Bellevance. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Ray Bellevance for a one-year term as Grand Juror, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and Ray is elected. Article 4, Shall the Town Have Its Current Taxes Collected by the Town Treasurer? What is your pleasure? Dave Shepherd has moved the Article 4. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of having the town collect its current taxes by the Town Treasurer, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, yes, ma'am? Yeah? Did I miss something?
No, no, I just, as we're continuing, I just, so sorry, I apologize for stopping the meeting here, but... the meeting here, but we're coming up to these votes, and if I see a place later, randomly article, whatever, later, and I want to change that to bring more monies to-
You would make an amendment.
Before?
No, you have to have the main motion on the floor, say, we're doing this one to collect current taxes.
Okay.
If you, if you wanted to say to collect past taxes, you would just make an amendment to change the word. We would then vote on the word, and then that would change, if it passed, that would change the main article, and then we go back. So if you've got a dollar amount you want to change-
No, I'm so sorry, my apologies. I'm talking about the articles coming up for like Article five through Article 22, and, and, there, I would like to take some money from one of these places and, and ask if it can go to another one, but the one that-
Then you need to make two changes. You can only do one article at a time. So if you wanted to take, and I don't know what order these are in, and I'm going to use big numbers, if we had an Article forty that you wanted to reduce by a thousand, you would deal with that when we do Article forty. And then you would, if Article forty-two is the one you want to put that thousand in and it passed, your first one passed-
Okay.
Then you would make an amendment to the second article, change that number, and then we vote on that and work our way back. So it is possible, yes.
Okay.
And I will walk you through it.
Okay, you're very kind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I was on the vote to have current taxes collected by the Town Treasurer, and I don't remember if I took a vote. I have another hand, so I'll wait. Would you please stand?
Yeah, sorry, I have a question about how the town taxes are collected. What does the Town Treasurer do? Just as a point of information. How are they collected?
I did not hear the question.
Yeah.
Oh, how are the taxes? They are currently collected by the Town Treasurer. You either mail them or bring them into Tanya in Alberta in the Town Clerk's office.
Right, okay. And so their role is simply to collect. What if people don't pay in a timely fashion? How does that work?
Then there's laws that take care of that. And I do not know those laws, and we cannot change those laws.
Okay.
So, but there is a process, correct, Tanya? And they follow it.
I'm sure they do. It is just a point of information. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? I think that's the first time that I've ever had questions on that one, which is nice. People are concerned. All those in favor of the Town Treasurer collecting taxes, current taxes, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the process continues. Article five, shall the town vote a budget of $4,417,752 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize the Select Board to set a new tax rate sufficient to provide the same? What is your pleasure? Ron Wiesen made a motion to approve the expenditure. OP? Yep? Oh, yes, I need a second. I'm glad somebody's awake this morning. Dave Shepard has seconded it, and OP has asked to be the first speaker.
See if I can wake up the crowd a little bit. I want to start by acknowledging something powerful. You are here, you've shown up, and in doing so, you are participating in the foundation of democracy, something that is increasingly challenged and abandoned at higher levels of government. But here in this room, democracy alive because you are investing in your community. The strength of our town is not just in our roads, its buildings or our budgets, it's in the people who show up, who care, who work to make this place better. The last two summers have tested us with natural disasters, and in those moments of crisis, we have proved who we are. We stood together, we supported one another, and as we move forward, we have to remember that no one is going to fix this town for us. It's ours. It's on us to invest in it, not just financially, but with our energy, our ideas and our commitment. In the past, I have talked about how community is a practice. It's something that we do every day, and how we show up for ourselves and for one another. And let's be clear, showing up doesn't mean agreeing on everything. It doesn't mean pretending everything is perfect. It means bringing your thoughts, your frustrations, your concerns, but doing it in a way that builds rather than breaks down. This meeting is about deciding how we invest in our town. Our town staff and our Select Board have put in front of you what we believe is the best way forward, but this is your moment to speak up. If you disagree, bring ideas, bring solutions. No one, this is not a space for victimhood. No one in this town is a victim. We are not powerless. We are not underserved. When we come together, we are strong. Hardwick has a reputation, one that some outsiders might not understand. This may see, they may see struggle and label it as vulnerability, but I see resilience. I see people who have faced hard times, who have lived through challenges, who have learned and grown from them. Strength doesn't always look the way we expect it to. It doesn't mean having it all together, it means showing up even when it's hard. Vulnerability isn't a weakness, it's courage. And the people in this town, whether they've been here for generations or just arrived, are some of the strongest people I've known. Hardwick hasn't always been a place where everyone has, or Hardwick has always been a place where everyone has a seat at the table. It doesn't matter how long you've lived here, it doesn't matter what your background is, if you show up, your voice matters. Your ideas matter. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for investing in our town, and let's get to work.
Eric Remick is now going to present an explanation of the budget, but I need a motion to approve the budget. Did I do that? I have one, okay. I'm getting elderly and I don't always remember because I didn't write it down. So this is your chair.
Good morning, and thank you, OP, for that rousing intro. I don't have anything nearly as rousing as that, but I will just start by saying, yesterday, a friend asked me if I was nervous about town meeting, and I said no, because I feel like this is a place where we come and discuss, particularly now, this budget, the motion we're on. And as OP said, the Select Board has worked for months to prepare this and put it out to you. We believe it's the best, best path forward for the town. However, the purpose of this meeting is to give everyone a voice, so people can ask questions, you can amend this budget from the floor, and the whole process should bring us to where we need to be. So with that, I want to turn your attention to, well, first, let's start on page nine, which has, of your town report, which has some numbers about estimated impact of the tax, proposed, the estimated impact, the proposed tax, sorry, the proposed budget would have on the tax rate. And I just want to say about this, that the big variable this year, I mean, always the big variable is the estimated grand list. And every year, we don't, at town meeting, we don't know what that grand list amount will be on July first, because it's still three months away, or, yeah, four, some number of months. Anyway, but this year in particular, because we're under, we're in the process of a townwide reappraisal, and because home values in Vermont and nationwide have gone up, we're projecting a huge increase in the grand list as a result of the townwide reappraisal. So I just want to throw out that that second number on page nine is a, is a really big increase in the grand list, and kind of throws all the other numbers into, into a little bit of a tailspin. The, you know, the proposed tax rate would go way down if the grand list is that high because, because of the way the rate is set. Anyway, if anyone asks questions about that, I could try to answer. But what I really want to talk about is on page 11, which is the, the budget summary is down at the bottom of page 11. And the budget that the Select Board is putting in front of you today is for $4,417,752. This is the largest increase that we've ever proposed in the time that I've been on the board. It's significant. And I'd like to just explain the main drivers of that increase. So that's about a $400,000 increase, and I'm just going to talk in very rough numbers. So of that $400,000, you could say about half of it, about $200,000, is just an increase in expenses and the cost of doing business exactly as we do it today. So as I'm sure anyone who's bought a car recently knows, the cost of cars have gone up. The cost of trucks have gone up. The town buys trucks and cars. The cost of health insurance has gone up. The cost of everything has gone up. And our town employees get a annual cost of living increase in their wages. So all those things combined drive an increase of about $200,000 if we didn't do anything differently. So the, the other $200,000 of the $400,000 total increase that we're proposing is, you can think of it as being driven by two new employees. Or, so the first one is a Public Works Director, which would be a brand-new position, and this would be a position that would focus on project management of public works, things, things like bridges and roads and culverts and, you know, all the projects that we have, a lot of them as a result of, that, a lot of them as a result of flooding, we have a lot of projects that need to happen. And then, I guess I'll also say about that Public Works Director position, the first year I was on the Select Board, and I don't remember what year that was, but I went to the then-town manager, John Jewitt, and I said, this is crazy. We don't, why, why don't we have somebody whose job it is to look at and plan out everything that needs to be done for the public works? And, you know, why doesn't the road foreman do all that? Sorry, Tom, but that's what I asked. And John Jewitt said, look, the road foreman is a foreman. He's the guy who goes out in the morning and tells the crew, this is what we're doing today, and along with the crew, he then gets into a truck or a grader or whatever, and they all work together. He's the foreman, but he's working, you know, like physically hands-on working during the day. And John said, if you want somebody to do all the things you're talking about, that's a whole new position. And this was over 10 years ago, and here we are, and we're proposing that new position. The other new position that we're proposing, and Mike Henry corrected me in a recent Select Board meeting and said, okay, so it's not really a new position so much as we're proposing to bring back a position, bring back a full-time police officer into the police force. And the police force has been, Mike has a great report in the town report, you can find it in there, and the police force has been a little short-staffed, and adding another full-time officer would help greatly. It would also reduce the reliance on part-time officers a little bit, and it would reduce the amount of time the police chief needs to spend actually, you know, taking shifts. So overall, it would be super helpful, it would help with retention, it would help with coverage, it would help just keeping, keeping the public order, I guess. So anyway, in summary, the, the increase, proposed increase is driven by, half of it's driven by just general increases in the expense of everything, the other half is driven by these two new positions that we're proposing, Public Works Director and an additional police officer. With that, I'd like to see if anyone has questions or comments and start the discussion.
Good morning. My name's Anne Galloway, I live in East Hardwick. Thank you very much, OP and Eric, for the presentation. I have a question about the Public Works Director position, which is, how would this be affected if the Trump administration decided they were going to stop all federal funding of town, you know, for town projects?
So, um-
Did she give her name?
Yeah, that was Rachel Kane.
Anne Galloway.
Oh, sorry, Anne Galloway. Sorry. I'm confused, I'm mixing all my people. It's a great question. The question is basically, how is this position affected if federal funding doesn't come through? And I guess, and this is something I've wondered too, I don't, I don't know the answer, and I don't, but I'll, I'll say, one of the things that OP keeps reminding us is that we can't plan by, you know, planning for the worst and like hunkering down and not planning to move forward. We need to plan as if we can move forward full steam. Definitely if, for example, if FEMA funding didn't come through, despite the fact it's been committed, and we have, we have received a lot of FEMA funding, but if future FEMA funding didn't come through, that would impact our ability to do some of the projects we have planned. And I guess my other response is, just back to the anecdote I told, I, when I first joined the Select Board, I wondered why we didn't have this position. And I think it would be very beneficial to the town to have this position, to just be able to plan out, to be able to forecast, to be able to do more in-depth, looking at our, you know, equipment and our capital equipment schedule and all that.
I just had a, my name is Pollyanna Cooper-Lavanji, and I had a question regarding, so page nine, you referred to the grand list, and then on page 35, the Hardwick Assessors portion, talks about doing the property inspections were conducted for the purposes of the 2025 townwide appraisal. So I'm just trying to understand the math portion of it. The budget has gone up, but our grand list, the tax liability for a $100,000 home has gone down. Is it because of those assessments of property getting valued at, at higher values?
Yeah, so, okay, let me try to, let me try to explain this. I don't think it's simple. So, first of off, the grand list is a simp, is just the sum of the value of all the properties in town. You just list every, all the value of, well, the, the listers are previously, now the assessor, just make a list of every single property in town, they assign every property a value, you add up everything on that list, and that's your grand list value. So the, the townwide, oh, sorry, let me, so that's the grand list, and then we also are going to, we, like last year, we had a budget, and this year, we're proposing a budget. We have the budget that we vote on, and then the part of the motion also says to, the motion that we're on also says to, yeah, to empower the Select Board to establish the tax rate to meet the same. So the way this Select Board finds the tax rate is with great help from the Town Clerk, and we, and our business manager, and we, basically, you take the amount of the budget that we're voting on right now in this, in this article, and you subtract out the revenues, and so what, whatever our budget is minus the revenues, that's the amount that we need to raise in taxes. The way we raise that amount in taxes, and in this case, on page nine, the top value is that number, that $3,386,157. You take that number, you divide it by the grand list number, and then you get the estimated ta, or then you get the tax rate. So that's how we get there. So then the second part, I hope, is that clear enough? Okay. So then the second part of your question is the impact on a $100,000 home. And, and this, on this page nine, it shows a decrease in the property tax rate. Remember, it's the rate, and then the, which would mean the tax on a $100,000 home would go down. So what everybody in the room needs to remember is that part of the townwide reappraisal generally, overall, this won't be true for every single property, but overall, all the values- values, most of the values, nearly all the values are going up. So if last year you were taxed on a $100,000 home, sometime this spring, you're going to get a reappraisal. It's going to have your value, it's going to have everybody else's value. There's a whole process to getting to approving that. But likely, if you had a $100,000 home last year, this spring, you're going to say, "Wow, actually, they now say it's a $150,000 home," or something like that, right? So your value has gone up. Meanwhile, the tax rate has gone down. But the net effect is going to be what your new value is multiplied by that new tax rate. Is that helpful? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, back to the federal funding.
So the, the question about federal funding, in the numerous meetings I have with different state and federal agencies, there has been no indication that federal funding for town and state infrastructure projects to include FEMA, USDA, which is rural development, there, it's all in place. We've been processing reimbursements with some of the bigger projects, and the USDA right now is working on a package for our wastewater plant along with FEMA. So I don't see any infrastructure projects being compromised, the funding being compromised with that. So it's, it's from the horse's mouth and not the media.
Lynn Gedenkin, would it be fair to say that if your assessment goes up the average amount of all the assessments in the town, and the budget's increasing by 10%, that we can expect property taxes to increase by roughly 10%?
So I think that would be, yes, that's a great way to look at it. The only thing I would say to keep in mind is that when you get your property tax bill, again, really rough numbers, but in the past, I think something like 40% to 45% of your property tax bill is the municipal tax, and the other 55% to 60% is the school tax. And that all comes on the same bill. The only thing we vote on, we're working on right now, is the municipal portion. But yes, I think, Lynn, that's a great way to think about it. Like, if, if you were exactly average on the increase of the grand list, or, sorry, the increase of your property value, and we pass this, and it's a 10% increase, and then roughly, there could be a 10% increase in your tax, except, in your municipal portion of your tax, except in the case that properties that have been added to the grand list, which happens every year, that increases the grand list and helps spread the load. So it probably wouldn't be a full 10%, but it, on the order of, you're in the right order of magnitude.
Was there another, yes, back here, there was another hand.
Carol Schmink, East Hardwick. I'd like to call attention to our gathering here to the line items known as health insurance. I am, speak on this every single year, but if 25, 30 years ago, we had taken the power of health insurance away from corporate greed, we wouldn't have $450,000 in this budget to pay for health insurance. I look at this as a double tax. I'm paying, in my property tax, I'm paying private insurance for, and I'm not saying nobody should, everyone should be insured, but it should be, I don't see why people should be paying their own health insurance and paying the health insurance for municipal workers. I think it's come to the point with $450,000 just in the town budget, and the school district doesn't even make it clear. They hide. It's just put in, you know, how much each person is being paid, but it doesn't even list it as a line item, how much we're paying for health insurance. And I really think people should get on this and stop paying for everyone's health insurance to private corporate companies when we're all paying, the people that don't have the privilege of benefits with their employment are paying the benefit for all the people who are already being paid lovely amounts of money for their jobs. And they should have the same penalty as everyone else to pay for their health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that, that like most employers, the town offers health insurance policy as a benefit, and the town employees do have to pay a portion of that coming out of their, out of their paycheck, similar to other employers.
Other questions? Right behind you.
I'm David Shepherd. I'm dating myself a little bit, but I was on the Select Board for 10 years a while ago. And we had, I think, three office staff, including the town manager. And I'm wondering if you could explain what your, beyond the town manager, what the other five proposed staff would be doing. One of them, you said, would be this Public Works Director, but that would still allow three other people. Because if you look back one more year to the 2023, 2024 year, in the office, town manager office staff, you've got a 57% increase. And if you added up all the benefits, it's way, way over 60% growth in two years. And it just seems like an explosion of office expenses. And I just, I, I just wonder whether the Public Works Director really needs to be, even also have you looked at whether the Public Works person could be a part-time person?
Yeah, I mean, we did talk about that, and I think that the consensus was that it really, that we had a full-time, we had work for a full-time person, and that we, we also thought we'd probably have an easier time hiring it as a full-time position. If you don't mind, Casey Rowl, our business manager, would also like to respond.
You mentioned the 57% increase in last year. One of the reasons for that was just a shift in moving the community development coordinator and the zoning administrator out of a different line into town manager office staff. So that's why it showed the big increase, because we basically just shifted two positions that used to show up in other payroll into town manager office staff, because those two positions report to the town manager. So from last year, the only difference is the one additional full-time of the Director of Public Works. So it's one full-time addition from last year, and then from the previous year, it's just because we shifted two positions into that. So the five full-time make up, the town manager, the business manager, the payroll administrator, the zoning administrator, and the new Public Works Director, as well as our community development coordinator. That's what represents the five full-time and one part-time.
Yeah, we changed zoning to full-time last year.
It also went from part, it also went from part-time to full-time this current fiscal year. So that was the other, not only did we shift it in there, but it went from part-time to full-time last year.
So, next?
Next? Hands up.
Oh, there's...
Hi, guys, it's me again. I have a question about, several questions about the library.
Okay.
And... Oh, okay, sure. Raise your hand so I can find you. Welcome.
I'm Griffin Schneider of Hardwick, and I just had a question of how we're going to be appointing the Director of Public Works.
Sorry, about how, how we're going to be appointed? How we're going to hire? We would do a search, we advertise, and we, it would be hired by the town manager. We often do hirings by including at least one Select Board member in a hiring committee, sometimes, you know, bringing in other community members who are interested too.
Can you just remind us what the community development position does, and could some of that work be taken over by a Public Works position? I'm sure everyone's busy and doing good work. I just wonder, you know, what, what that office is really focused on for their work. Thank you.
Can you, can you take that one?
The community development position, the part-time position, is mainly for grant writing and seeking funding for projects. So what the Public Works Supervisor, Project Manager position would do administratively would be capital planning. We currently do not have a capital plan, and I, one of the things that I want to do is, is put in place a capital plan, both for flood recovery projects and for moving forward to start to repair our aging infrastructure that has been neglected for quite some time.
I wondered if someone could speak to how much in total was spent on the new building, please?
I'm going to need to lean on someone. Daphne, do you, is that something you can field?
The, the town of Hardwick passed a bond for 400 and some odd thousand dollars. The rest of the building was funded by donations and grants.
Do you know the total amount?
Not yet. Over $3 million in the end. So the bond was passed a number of years ago, but the town is not, is not footing the bill for anything else vis-à-vis the construction.
Any more questions in regards to the budget?
I, I have a couple more questions about the library. Sorry. Can I, is it all right to go ahead? Okay, thank you. I wonder if you could also talk about, well, this is actually a question for you, Eric, and the Select Board. What level of oversight does the Select Board have over the library?
So here's my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that the town, that the library is a town building, but that the library as an operating entity is run by a Board of Trustees, who we just voted to add, you know, replace three seats on. But really, the running of the li, the actual running of the library is done by the trustees. And the trustees have, they come to the Select Board and, and propose adding a certain amount to the town budget to be given to the running of the library, and that's what you see in your town report.
Thank you.
The, the trustees are, yeah, Opie's just pointing out, the trustees are elected, all of them are elected by this group.
And so the payroll for the library comes out of the town?
It comes out of the library budget, which, in the current proposal, is nearly completely funded by the town. There's a little, there's a, there's some grant monies in there and some money out of their capital fund, but mostly it's town money, yes.
And is there any effort to do more fundraising to support the operating budget of the library, like you did for the building?
Long range, that would be ideal. Unfortunately, the, the endowment, the non-existent endowment is problematic. So it's going to take a number of years to establish any kind of fund that will support the running of the library. We did, we do annual fundraising. Most of that, most of the programming at the library is funded by donations. It's not even a line item in the budget. And we apply for grants for internet, the internet, we got a big grant for, and other areas. We've always got our eyes open looking for grants. Not so sure how many are going to be available in the future, but we do our best to keep the budget down.
Hi, I'm Meredith Holch. I have a question for you, Anne. Just wondering, do you have a problem with the library being fun?
You can't direct questions to another one, you have to direct them to me.
Okay. I'm just wondering...
Restate your name, please. I did not...
I did. It's Meredith Holch, H-O-L-C-H.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that most town libraries are funded by towns, including all of the staff, in, I think, every state in the United States. So I guess I'm just making a comment on that and wondering out loud if people have problems with that. I'm wondering why and what it is.
Okay, thank you. Up front here, or halfway?
Hi, David Gross. I was a past library trustee. Just to clarify, the library structures, or different libraries are structured different ways. The Jew Divine Memorial Library is basically structured, so it's an independent entity from the Select Board town budget. If the Select Board so decides, they can just deny the request that this library trustees ask for an appropriation, in which case the library would have to be run on whatever they can scrape together. Obviously, that hasn't been the case in the past because of the support for the library from the community, and it is an excellent service to the community. It's not just books. And we have a wonderful library director. I'd be more than happy to explain to you how many services it offers. But as a result, the trustees of the library, once they receive their money, it is no strings attached. They decide how they're going to spend that money, who they're going to hire, the salaries and what. So they are, in that case, an independent body, if that helps clarify the questions.
Thank you. Are there any more questions regarding the budget that we have not brought up? Danny?
So I just have a comment about who don't care about the library. It's not a matter of us caring about the library. Some of us, you know, are passionate, as passionate as everyone else about the library, but it's also about money. And we fund our fire department for under $90,000 of tax dollars this year, including the capital equipment fund. And we fund the library $200,000 a year. So it's, it's not a matter of what you like or dislike, it comes to what can we afford to do? And can we afford to continue to have a library that costs us twice as much as our firefighting department? You know, some people have concerns about that. So it's not a matter of what you like or dislike. To me, it's a matter of what we can afford. And that needs to be a consideration in every decision, whether it's the library or the rescue squad, or it doesn't matter. So, you know, that's, that should be the focus of this room today, is what can we afford to do to keep our town moving forward? That's, that's very key, so.
David, I'm going to wait. Other people haven't spoken.
I'm Rachel Jacobson of Hardwick. As, I, I want to speak to the hiring of a Public Works Director in relation to the, and, and sort of the relationship with the community development coordinator. I work as a planner professionally, and I have really seen the benefit... I work as a planner professionally, and I have really seen the benefits and the efficiencies of having advanced planning on capital projects. I think that the, having the community resources, community development coordinator already in place, it basically gives them a work plan potentially, you know, of things to support. I don't know the focus areas, but I think that it would put our town in a really positive position to be prepared for severe weather events and other proactive infrastructure management that we are only going to need more going forward. And if anyone at the front would like to speak to how that decision, you know, came to be, I'd love to hear more.
Thank you. So it, it was more of a comment, I think, than a question. But how the decision to propose this new public works director came to be, and Hopey will have a response. It was a long, a long conversation.
There's many, there's many areas. If we can go back to when the village and town merged. The, the road crew and the road foreman was, put, the responsibility of sewer and water and all of the, the in-town infrastructure was put on the road crew. So their job during the flood was to get the back roads back open, to get the culverts fixed. And I had two summers of projects, little projects, sidewalk projects, waterline projects, meter projects, that we had to put aside. And we don't have, we have kind of two village employees and we have a wastewater plant operator kind of allocated for the village. But we need somebody that can look ahead, get these projects planned, and pull people from different places to do these projects. So that was one aspect of it. And I think this, this position is long overdue, long overdue. And then the capital planning and putting in place, looking for, so the, the construction season and the, the funding cycles are all related. And getting funding in place and projects in place with shovel-ready plans is a big, is a big thing. Shovel-ready plans, that's what we, that's what everybody's asking. Do you have shovel-ready plans? And that's, that takes two years prior to putting a shovel in the ground. And that project manager would work with the community development coordinator and town staff to plan for those projects, to be able to implement them, and look for funding to implement them in, in the third year or the second year. So it's, it's really just trying to look ahead to long-term planning. And also managing the day-to-day a little bit more.
I think, I would, I would also add to that, that part of the discussion that we've had with the town manager and the select board has been around project management. And since the flood, the first July tenth flood in 2023, the, the towns had a lot of projects that needed to be implemented. And we can get funding, or we've been, we have been getting funding. We, we have reason to believe we'll continue to get funding to do the repair projects that were necessitated by the flooding. Getting the funding is one thing, but somebody needs to go out and acquire engineering services and go through the bids for the, you know, the engineers, and then hire the engineers, and then get the bid documents from the engineers, and then turn around and do a bid process and select, select someone to do the construction and then oversee the construction. And it turns out that project management was, has been just a huge load on our town manager's office. And so that was another component in considering putting this forward. And to me, anyway, pushed it kind of over the edge of, it would be really nice to have this, to, we really need to do something, and the most appropriate thing is to look at this as a public works director, because most of these projects turn out to be public works-related. And we haven't had, as, as Opie said, the capital planning or the, just the future planning that we have needed all along.
And back to you, Robyn. There's a gentleman.
Oh, can we call a vote for this?
Okay, we have someone to call the vote. All those in favor of stopping discussion and calling the vote, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. I will ask for the vote. Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Article Five. Shall the town vote a budget of four million, four hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize the select board to set a new tax rate sufficient to provide the same? All those in favor of Article Five, as I just reread, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and thank you for your input. Article Six through Article Twenty-two are the various appropriations as listed. It is possible to do them as a group. I will read each one individually. However, if you do not wish to do it as a group, we may pull one. Is there objection to doing Article Six through Twenty-two as a group? I have one objection. Are there any others? I have two objections. Are there any articles that you would like to pull to do separate? I don't need a vote on that. I'll just do it automatically. Ma'am? Robyn, she's coming.
Hi, I'm Deborah Hart. So I, I would like to discuss Article Eight, about the four thousand dollars going to support the Center for an Agricultural Economy.
Okay, I can pull that one out. Any others that people would like to do individually? Okay, I'll just not read that one now.
Okay. Because my question earlier, my point of order was, I'd like to take money out of this Article Eight and give it to another article.
So you'd wanna pull a second article?
Okay, correct. Thank you. Article Twenty-two, Salvation Farms, I'd like to pull that article also then. Thank you very much.
Does anyone object to pulling Article Eight and Twenty-two for separate discussion? Okay, then I will read the rest of them, and then we will vote in block. Article Six, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand, five hundred dollars for the support of a ware? Article Seven, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed two thousand, six hundred dollars for the support of Caledonia Home Healthcare and Hospice? Article Nine, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed two thousand, five hundred dollars for the support of the Crasberry Community Care Center? Article Ten, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed five thousand dollars for the support of the Greensboro Nursing Home? Article Eleven, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed five thousand dollars for the support of the Hardwick Area Food Pantry? Article Twelve, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand dollars for the support of the Hardwick Community Television? Article Thirteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed two thousand, eight hundred dollars for the support of the Hardwick Downtown Partnership Incorporated? Article Fourteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand dollars for the support of the Hardwick Historical Society? Article Fifteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed one thousand dollars for the support of Justice for Dogs? Article Sixteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed two thousand, five hundred dollars for the support of the Lemoyle Family Center? Article Seventeen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand, five hundred dollars for the support of the Northeast Kingdom Arts Council Incorporated, known as N E C Arts? Article Eighteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars for the support of Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging? Article Nineteen, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars for the support of the Northeast Kingdom Human Services? Shall the town appro, uh, excuse me, Article Twenty, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed one thousand dollars for the support of Northeast Kingdom Learning Services? Article Twenty-One, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed three thousand, four hundred dollars for the support of Rural Community Transportation, Inc.? What is your pleasure in regards to Article Six, Seven, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, and Twenty-One, as previously read? Dave Shepherd has moved to accept the articles. Is there a second? Anne Gilchrist has seconded. Any discussion on those articles? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the appropriation request for the articles that I read, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Now I will go back to Article Eight. Shall, somebody's phone needs to be shut off, please. Article Eight, shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed four thousand dollars for the support of the, of Center for an Agricultural Economy? What is your pleasure? Robyn, right here, please?
Thank you so much. So my question is, first of all, the Center for an Agricultural Economy, I don't know. They just built this giant building, and I'm, I know it was very expensive to build. I'm not really quite sure what the scoop, the scope is there. But anyway, they're asking the town for the, they're asking for the town appropriation of four thousand dollars to support the costs of keeping Atkins Field publicly accessible. That's what it says in the information in here. So that's what they're asking for that four thousand dollars for, to keep Atkins Field publicly accessible. It says that on page twenty-six. Salvation.
Sorry. I just wanna get there.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yes. I didn't, I need a motion for what you intend to do.
Oh.
Okay, just a motion to move the article to start with.
Oh.
Dave Shepherd has an art, has a motion to approve Article Eight as presented. Is there a second? Second from Ron Wiesen? And then Dave, as the motion maker, did you wish to make a comment? Okay, Ron is second. Did you wish to make a comment? No, okay, then you can go back.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little confused about everything that's going on. So bear with me. So Salvation Farms, I remember.
Okay, Salvation Farms is not on the table at this point.
Okay, 'cause that's what I wanted to do. I wanna pull from the Center for.
Okay, then you need to say how much you wanna reduce this.
Okay, my mistake.
And then when you go to the other one, you can add it to it.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
It's, the process is two different topics.
Okay, okay. I'm so sorry.
So you would move to make a mo, amendment to the motion?
Okay, I'd like to move to make a motion to the amendment.
No, amendment to the.
Amendment to the motion?
Of how much?
Of, of taking two thousand dollars off the support for Center for an Agricultural Economy.
Stop. Is there a second to that motion for the amendment? Who made the second, please? Over and back, name?
Justin Lander.
Justin Lander. You got it? Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove, to decrease the amount in Article Eight to two thousand dollars. Is there any discussion on that issue? One moment, please. Name in.
Rachel Kane. I was just hoping that maybe Deb Hart could give us a little background on why she thinks that.
Okay, then Paul, and then we'll go back.
If I could just add a correction or ask Marais if she could find someone to respond. I heard Deborah Hart say that the CAE built a building, but my understanding is that the town owns that building. So just to clarify, perhaps someone could comment on that one?
Okay, we have a select board member that will clarify that, I hope.
So, I'll try to, so the, 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 the structure in question is the Yellow Barn Project, formerly the Greensbor, no. You're, you're thinking of the Food Venture Center? The, the yellow, okay, sorry, the yellow, the Yellow Barn Project, which includes restoration of the Yellow Barn, formerly Greensboro Garage, and the new accelerator building next to it. Yes, so that is owned by the town of Hardwick. It is leased to, with a long-term lease, to a nonprofit called the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, and, which in turn leases to three tenants. Cabot has a, Cabot Cooperative Creamery has a retail store in the barn. Center for Agricultural Economy leases half of the space of the new building, and Jasper Hill Farms leases the other half of the space of the new building. And, yes, it was an expensive project. And, but the, yeah, so it's a town-owned project leased to people.
Did that clarify ownership of those buildings? Okay, we have new people that'd like to speak back.
Nancy Nodderman, and I'm just wondering if somebody from CAE, the, the employees or on the board could speak for CAE and their role in all of this? And I think if the town thinks about it, CAE has done some amazing things in support of this town and businesses within this town, food entities. But I would love somebody from, if there's somebody here. Thank you.
Okay, there was another new person. Okay, she's down back right now. Ron, she'll get to you.
Helen Beatty, I'm co-chair of the Center for Agricultural Board. I believe that CAE and their role in this community is invaluable. I think they have been central to a force for support of our agricultural community. They have been at the forefront of every single emergency in terms of assuring food security for every person in this town and businesses thriving during a pan, during a pandemic by supporting the agricultural community and its ability to serve our population. The Atkins Field is a, is a cultural hub for us. It's, it's our market in the summer. It's our concert for the civic standard. It is a gathering place for community in informal and formal ways. It, it is very expensive and challenging to be able to run. We've dealt with significant security issues there. So it, I think that this allocation will support Atkins Field, but more importantly, I think it's a statement for an organization that is so deeply committed to, to agriculture, to our community, and to the sustainability of the health of our community. So I would absolutely suggest that support, that we vote to sustain the four thousand dollar allocation and our continued support of an organization who frankly, in this period of time, is in a, some peril with what's going on federally. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another gentleman down back, I thought. If not Ron Wiesen, and then Opie.
Probably the best comment I could make is what she said. CAE has owned Atkins Field for quite a number of years. I was a rec committee person for, oh, probably fifteen or twenty years. And they've always offered the Atkins Field to the rec committee, to the town, and it's pretty much a gathering place for the community. place for the community. One of the things that may happen in Atkins Field is removing some of the soil from the field itself to lower the elevation, and that removal of soil would help absorb some of the floodwaters that would be found in the basement of all the homes on Granite Street. So it's a place of the community, and they plan to do something for the community, and have always done things for the community by allowing us the access. So I would also support the entire $4,000.
Thank you, Ron.
So I'm just going to make an assumption here about Atkins Field and the $4,000. Likely that would cover lawn mowing, so CAE would hire a local lawn mowing company to keep that open and available to the public, and probably the porta potty, so people aren't using the bathroom in the woods. I appreciate the... Like bringing that up, but I think that the $4,000 is money well spent for the community and will remain here in the community.
Anybody else before... That hasn't spoken, over here.
I am Annie Jackson from Heartbeat Live Sharing. I want to talk about that yellow building.
About what?
The Cabot place.
Oh, okay.
Because I worked at Jasper Hill, and are teaming up, and I really want to keep that place going.
Behind her.
Hello.
Please stand.
Ben Nodderman, I'm also on the board at the CAE. I feel like it's an invaluable anchor point for our community, as lots of great points have been brought up. Not only those points, but it's a hub for educating our youth in community gardening, lots of educational programming, and I feel like we would be doing our community disservice not to help push this along. So I have my full support for the full $4,000.
Anyone else wish to speak that hasn't spoken?
Michael DiMarco, Hardwick. I'm just wondering, is there any way we can get clarification on what... On the two articles and how they relate to each other from Deb, or... I know we're not supposed to discuss them together, I guess.
If there's no objection from the voters...
I'm just interested in the reasoning behind any of it.
Just be... Just one moment, please. Is there any objection to kind of discussing both of them at the same time? You guys have the vote to tell me how to manage, and if you want to hear the second half of this before the first half, just raise your hands. I think there's enough that have asked, that we will allow that, and we won't take any motions or votes on Article 22, but we'll discuss the reasoning for going from one to the other, if that's what you're asking. Okay, ma'am?
Erin Rosenthal. My question is, I guess, an operational question about, is it... Is it possible to increase the budget on one article while not decreasing any of the others? As possible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help anybody? Ma'am, over here.
I'd just like to point out that...
Name, please.
Lynn Gedanken, sorry. I'd like to point out that we don't need to decrease the funding for Atkins Field to increase the funding for Salvation Farms.
Yes, that's what I just said.
Okay.
Couldn't hear it. Okay, so if that is your intent, then we vote no on the amendment, go back to the original motion, and vote on that. And that is the process. That's all I'm giving you, is the process. Paul?
Just a quick comment. I think I learned during a tour of the new Accelerator Building this summer that there is some sort of relationship between CAE and Salvation Farms. Is there anyone here who could speak to that?
Hi, Dani Smith, Hardwick. I used to work for Salvation Farms, and actually was one of the people that helped get this motion onto the Hardwick Town Budget. This was the appropriate amount that our organization felt at the time would help cover some of the expenses that we used to benefit the community. The relationship between Salvation Farms and CAE goes back like decades. I know at one time we used their Just Cut facility to help process some of our seconds, and I believe at this time they are still using that for workforce development. So there's a strong relationship, and I don't think they are competitors, they are collaborative colleagues in the food system, and so I also agree we should not defund one to increase the other.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before I call for a vote? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so sorry...
Please stand.
Deborah Hart, sorry, 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 sorry. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any dispute about the benefits that the Center for Ag has provided the community. I was simply trying... I was looking at Salvation Farms. I've known of Salvation Farms for years and years and years, and they are just busting it out there. They're doing incredible work, bringing unwanted produce into people's homes. So all I was looking at, I was looking at all of the numbers, and I said, "Oh, $4,000 for Atkins Field? That seems pretty high. Oh, $1,500 for Salvation Farms? That's really low. Where can we... Like, can we bring more into this and take..." But I don't mean to like take from them, I just want to support Salvation Farms. So clearly I was mis... I misunderstood. And again, I don't... I'm not disputing the role that the Center for Ag plays in the... In the community. I totally get it, and they're doing great work. I just really want to give more to Salvation Farms, because they are boots on the ground, and they're amazing.
Okay, we will discuss Salvation Farms after this one.
Super duper, thank you.
As a point of order, our moderator could perhaps suggest that this motion be withdrawn, and the next motion...
It's easier to vote on it.
It's up to you.
We have a call on the amendment. All those in favor of wanting to vote on the amendment now, please raise your hands. Okay, I will call the question. On Article 8, we have an amendment to change the dollar amount from $4,000 to $2,000. All those in favor of changing the number, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed to the amendment of changing $4,000 to $2,000, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for the amendment fails, and we're back to the $4,000. I will read Article 8 again. Shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed $4,000 for the support of the Center of the Agricultural Economy? What is your... I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the $4,000, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Now we are down to Article 22. Shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed $1,500 for the support of the Salvation Farms Incorporated? What is your pleasure? Robin? Robin makes a motion to approve Article 22 as read. Is there a second? And Dave Shepherd seconds. Any discussion in that matter? We have a motion and a second. Yes. Robin? Where'd she go? Right here.
I'm so sorry, I thought I asked this question at the very beginning, I'm clearly...
No, we can only do one article at a time.
I know, but I just don't understand these whole things.
So now we have to... Your intent, I understand, is to change the $1,500 to something.
I would like to do that, but what I don't understand now is then where could we get money from to bring...
They would add it to the budget, or...
Okay, my question is, could we increase the allocations for Salvation Farms? However much we can...
You need to give me a figure.
Oh, for God's sake, $3,500, please, would you please? If we could increase it to...
$2,000.
Increase it $2,000, yes, at least.
You want to increase it by $2,000 or to $2,000?
I would... I would like to increase it as much as we are able to, so if we could bring the entire amount up to $3,500, I think that that would be very well used by Salvation Farms.
Okay, I need a motion from you for a specific dollar amount.
My motion for the specific dollar amount is to bring it up to $2,000. So that's three...
No, it has to be a total, so you're...
$3,500 is the answer.
Yes, so your motion would be to amend Article 22 from $1,500 to $3,500.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Behind you, Robin? Over here, raise your hand.
Did you get a second?
Oh, he did a second. Do you have his name?
Okay, so now we're doing discussion? Or you got a second?
Yes, okay. Anyone that wishes to discuss changing... No, he made the second, did you wish... Okay, is there any discussion on changing the $1,500 in Article 22 to $3,500? I have someone over here, Nancy.
Thank you, Robin. Nancy Nodderman, I'm just going to suggest people look at the page 10, and this is just information. This gives us the total request, what the total is of all of these requests, which is $51,000, blah, 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 blah. And then the tax rate would be appropriately changed to accommodate that. This... These requests, and correct me if I'm wrong, these requests are just requests to be added on, they are not in any budget. Okay? Thank you.
Did everyone understand that what Nancy just explained? You approved a town budget... I'm just clarifying, I'm not giving an opinion. You approved a town budget, if I can find it here, of $4,417,752, and the appropriation request would add another $51,961 to that budget, because they cannot budget for appropriate... Right, and you're amending the budget by doing this. So that $51,000... Yes, but is... Are the appropriations in the budget? No, that's what I'm saying, is that they're in addition to the budget we just approved. And so that, if you approve that $2,000, then it would be $53,000 that you're raising for appropriations. Any further discussion on changing the $1,500 to $3,500?
Dave Gross. On the topic of just these requests coming in, the boards usually discuss these and pick an appropriate number they feel represents what they can ask for the town.
Each group, you mean?
Each group, yes. And I would think that unless somebody can stand up and voice a reason why we should not believe this group, that this is a good number, I think we should just respect what they're asking for, and if they think next year by this discussion, they should ask for more, they will.
Thank you. Did everyone understand that? Each group asks for their appropriation by petition to get on the warning. Any other comments in regards to the amendment to Article 22? Nancy Nodderman. She's coming, Nancy. Robin gets her exercise once a year.
You know, next year I'm going to move that, that everyone has to come to the middle.
We could do that, too.
I think going to the middle is a great idea. Nancy Nodderman, I'm just going to say, I suspect we are going to have more hungry people in the coming year, and I suspect it might not be a bad idea to increase this to the $3,500.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to amending the dollar amount? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment to Article 22 that would change the requested $1,500 to $3,500, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. I believe the ayes have it. Does anyone question my hearing? Nobody questions. I have my hearing aids in. Now we're back to the main motion, which has been amended to read, "Shall the town appropriate a sum of money not to exceed $3,500 for the support of Salvation Farms Incorporated?" Any further discussion on the new main motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the new main motion, which has $3,500 for the support of Salvation Farms Incorporated, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion... There was one nay, but the motions carry. And now my favorite articles. Article 23. Shall the town authorize a select board for the period of one year to enter into contracts with new industrial and commercial owners, lessees, baileys, of real property, or with existing or new owners, lessees, baileys, or operators, who construct, acquire, or renovate industrial and/or commercial real property, including additions to existing property, for the purpose of fixing and maintaining the municipal rate applicable to such real property, or for the purpose of fixing the amount of money which shall be paid as an annual municipal tax upon such real property pursuant to the provisions of Title 24 VSA Section 2741. That's one sentence. What is your pleasure? I have a motion to approve the gentleman over there, and Norma Wiesen, I'll give you the second. Any discussion on Article 23 as I read? All those in favor of Article 3 as I previously read, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Article 24. Shall the town authorize a select board for the period of one year to enter into contracts with operators of agricultural real property, or with existing or new owners, lessees, baileys, or operators who construct, acquire, or renovate, or who intend to construct, acquire, or renovate agricultural real property for the purpose of fixing and maintaining the valuation of such real property in the grand less, for the purpose of fixing and maintaining the municipal rate applicable to such real property, or for the purpose of fixing the amount in money which shall be paid as an annual municipal tax upon such real property pursuant to provisions of Title 24 VSA Section 2741. What is your pleasure? Norma Wiesen makes a motion to accept Article 24 as I read. Dave Shepherd seconds it. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 24 as I previously read, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Article 25. To conduct... To transact any other non-binding business proper to be brought before said meeting. I have a personal note that I would like to make. I have been standing before you for about 19 or 20 years. This is my last town meeting. I thank you all very much for your support. It has been a true honor to serve you in this capacity, and next year I will be out Thank you. I have known this guy since he was this tall, so it's dear to my heart to have him as our town manager.
So, on behalf of...
So, on behalf of the select board and the town staff, we'd like to present ORICE with this gift, a small token of our appreciation for her many years here as moderator and many other things in town.
You will always hold a special spot in my heart.
ORICE, next year when you're asking questions, you better sit on the aisle.
I will. But next year, I'm going to recommend that they have a microphone here and people come up front and speak. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Neil Urick from Hardwick. So last town meeting day, we voted on whether to keep Lakeview open as an advisory vote, and I'd just like to make some comments on that.
I didn't understand what you said.
Last town meeting day, we had an advisory vote whether to close Lakeview Elementary School, and I'd like to make some comments on that right now. Because a lot has changed in the last year. And when Hardwick, Greensboro, Woodbury, and San Rosans voted to keep Lakeview open last year, that should have been the end of the conversation. We voted to keep it open. Nothing should have changed. But instead, the Mountain View School Board decided to listen to the people who claimed they wanted to save money. And so the school board changed Lakeview, moved to change Lakeview into pre-K center. Now, even though the board is giving a complaining minority what they want, Lakeview is no longer going to be an elementary school, and it saves money by doing so. This group of people aren't satisfied because the new pre-K center disrupts Hardwick Elementary by removing the pre-K in this building and moving it to Lakeview. Well, you can have cost savings, or you can have stability. You can't have both. You can't decide to underfund education and not expect it to somehow result in unpleasant changes to your own life. It's time to do what we should have done in the first place. It's time to push back against the bullies who want to defund our school, and we need to just say no. No changes to Lakeview Elementary, no changes to Hardwick Elementary, or Woodbury Elementary. Yes, our world is changing rapidly, and we are going to have to adapt. But if there's anything worth protecting from change, it's our children and their education. Not only should we not change Lakeview in the present moment, but we need to ensure that we don't have this conversation every year. We should, what I propose, and this is not a non-binding business, so this is actually a proposal, is to have a moratorium on any changes to the open or closed status of our elementary schools for five years. Looking beyond our district, it's time to write to our state-represented senators saying that we don't want any more consolidations of our elementary schools' boards in the upcoming legislative section. If you want any information, feel free to talk to me after the meeting, or go to publicschoolsvermont.org. Thank you.
Could you sum that up in just a quick one or two sentences? Your conclusions?
So, yes. My conclusion is, don't close Lakeview Elementary School. It's what we voted for last year.
Are you a Hardwick resident?
I just want people to know that this is what people are trying to do. And so if you want to take action, attend the Lake, the Mountain View School Board meetings, and come and talk, and let them know that we voted, we voted as a town, and as a collection of towns, to keep Lakeview Elementary open. And by doing so, we voted to keep it intact as it is, but instead, it's being changed into something else. So if you voted to keep Lakeview open, you need to go to the school board, the Mountain View School Board, and tell them that in doing so, you wanted them to keep Lakeview open as an elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Paul? And everything we discuss here is non-binding, except for my resignation.
I'm going to keep this simple and not reference anything specific, but those of you reading the Gazette might have been noticed last issue that there's been the suggestion that some of the organizations we've allocated funds for have not handled them in an effective way, and people doing bookkeeping have misappropriated funds. I would like to ask our select board in the future, when they are receiving requests for allocations, to require some sort of statement that those organizations are conforming with generally accepted accounting principles for appropriate checks and balances.
Thank you. Jan?
Hello, my name's Jan, live here in Hardwick, and I want to talk a little bit about Spring Fest. Now, if you look outside, it might be hard to believe, but eventually, winter is going to give way to spring. Now, I haven't lived in this town as long as some of you, but this thing has been going on since 1950. I've been reading out all these old Hardwick Gazette things about what the old Tula Festival was like, and how it's changed over the years. How it used to be a bigger fair. Times have changed because we've changed, but also, things have gotten more expensive, insurance, you know, why we don't have big giant rides anymore. I wasn't here for any of that. But I just want to tell you about what we're going to do. So there's going to be a few changes. So the Hardwick Kiwanis, as you know, Kiwanis Club has been doing this since the very beginning. Today, they're having a blood drive up at Hazen. So I don't know that, I know Sherry's not here, and most of them, most of the key people are not here today, but I spend some of my time helping out the Hardwick Downtown Partnership. But it's really, I'm here to talk about a collaboration that involves the Civic Standard, Center for Agricultural Economy, the Town of Hardwick, Hardwick Recreation Committee, the American Legion, I'm not going to forget people, Hardwick Trails, the Recreation Committee. We're all working together to make this thing a community event. So we've been talking since October, and we're still a few months away, but just going to tell you a little about what's in store. There's going to be a couple of changes I want you to know about. So it used to be one long day on Saturday, right? And I know about you, but I didn't make everything because it's a long day. So we're going to break it up a little bit. We're going to have Friday, starting off with a farmer's market with food trucks, and then we're going to have a concert and dance party at the Atkins Pavilion on Friday. Then Saturday, we've got a bird walk, we've got a fun run, and we've got the parade that everyone knows about. And then, instead of trying to move the whole show down Atkins Field, we're going to stay downtown. So we're going to have a street fair in downtown Hardwick. We're going to see how it goes, okay? So I hope you just understand, roll with the change, and we'll learn from it, okay? We think we're going to be able to close off North Main Street and have it centered there, but it's going to be throughout downtown. So just be checking Front Porch Forum. If you want to get on the Hardwick Downtown Partnership email list, you can get, put your name on a board out in the room, and we'll just, I guess the last thing I want to say is that we're coordinating this thing, but we're not doing the thing. You guys are doing the thing. So what we're really inviting you is for you to be involved. And the main way is you can be in the parade, and not just be in the parade. Do something fun and cool in the parade. We're going to have, try to be a little more attentive. Now, during the fair, you can perform. You can host an activity. If you're a musician, we'd love to talk to you. If you're an artist, we'd love to talk to you. If you have food, we'd love to talk to you. And games, anything you can think of that you want to contribute to, share with people, come talk to us, okay? Money's always welcome, but what we really need is bodies and energy, okay? Thank you very much.
Just a minute. Before we have any others, I'm going to make sure everybody gets a bingo. I'm going to read my card. East Hardwick, Chief of Police, 2024. The motion carries. Route 15, Route 14, Foreman, Plow, Parking, Assess Value Amendment. Tim Winter, whoever that is. Nay. All in favor? Town Garage, Maple Syrup, Water, Line Painting, Yellow Barn, Budget, Bend, Point of Order, Judevine Falls, Cary Road, and Foundation. If your card is different... Oh, wow, I just called. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say I had bingo before you did that. Point of order.
All right, I tried.
Hi, I'm Tracy Martin. I'm the part-time community development coordinator for the Town of Hardwick. I just wanted to make an announcement. You may have noticed, coming in on March 12th, that's a week from Wednesday at 6:30, there's going to be a community meeting, a community gathering upstairs in the big room in the Memorial Building. This is kind of the beginning of the wrap-up of the Better Connections Project. We've been working on for about a year to develop a plan for the village of East Hardwick. Everybody's invited. There's going to be soup and snacks and a sneak preview of a draft plan, and we're going to be looking for some feedback on the plan as it stands. We've gotten some wonderful feedback over the year from community members at another gathering and through a survey. So anyway, I hope you'll come join us, 6:30, March 12th, Memorial Building. Be there, eat, drink soup, eat soup. Do you drink soup, or do you eat soup? I guess you could do either. Anyway, thanks.
Who's got the mic now?
I'm going back there, I need exercise.
Oh, I see it, okay, way over there.
Brendan Buckley. Thank you, ORICE, thank you, Select Board. Thanks, everyone, for being here this morning. I know this is an issue that towns across Vermont struggle with, but each of us today is probably representing fifteen to twenty of our fellow Hardwickians. And I'd love the Select Board to consider giving more people an opportunity to be at this meeting by scheduling it other than in the middle of a workday. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple people here, I can't see faces.
Hi, I'm Lisa Cathcart. I'm a Hardwick resident. I would like to bring up the Jacksonville Dam, just for your consideration. It was built over a hundred years ago. It's the first open water for migrating flocks. We have eagles, we have loons, we have a lot of silt. Originally, when it was built, it was fourteen feet deep by two miles long. And I feel like if we can look at some of the silt and, I don't know, I'm a dreamer, use it to make community gardens, to feed our community, to feed our citizens. I feel like food is going to be a real issue, like Deb Hart said. I feel like as a community, we can do something, and we can use, if it's appropriate and if it's okay. I know the state doesn't want to do anything with it, but please keep Jacksonville Dam there because along with flood comes drought. And we will always have a water source, and even though it's not being used for hydroelectric right now, it used to produce 10% of the town's electricity. And I don't think that's something to shake your head out at these times. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I don't know if I'm out of line. Helen, are you still here? Can you address the local emergence management plan? I think people need to hear about what Neighbor to Neighbor has been working on in conjunction with the town.
Thanks, Nancy. Hardwick Neighbor to Neighbor has partnered with the Town of Hardwick in many, many ways, but particularly in follow-up to really helping as a partner around flood response. We have been working with them to address what clearly surfaced as voids in our readiness. And so, over the last year, we've got about twenty volunteers, and together are trying to improve the local emergency management plan, which does a beautiful job in saying what town employees are doing and how the emergency center will be run, but does not specify how all of our community, all of our volunteer churches and service groups can also be very effectively and efficiently mobilized. And we are leading the state in this effort. It is, we're lucky enough to have an engaged enough community and committed enough town to be able to really do a good job at this. April 12th, we will have a meeting in the morning to be able to share all the work that this group has done, and also hopefully sign on as many volunteers as we can who can join the ranks and be in readiness as we hopefully don't soon, but eventually will confront our own next challenge. So April 12th, the Memorial Building, in the morning. Celebrate with us this good work, and join us to be able to further strengthen our town in its response efforts. Thanks.
She's coming.
I'm Elena Considine, I'm a Hardwick resident. I know everybody's ready to go, but I would like to propose a non-binding resolution. "We, the residents of Hardwick, resolve to formally request that our governor, Phil Scott, publicly reaffirm his commitment to upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights of Vermonters in the Vermont Constitution amidst federal overreach, even if confronted with federal threats related to funding or other matters. Furthermore, we encourage him to proactively leverage his authority and engage with his colleagues nationwide to advocate for the protection of the rights of government personnel, immigrants, and individuals belonging to the LGBTQIA+, disabled and BIPOC communities. Additionally, we call on him to work with his colleagues on both a state and federal level to safeguard critical services such as Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security, which are essential to the well-being of all Vermonters."
As moderator, I declare that a non-legal motion, as the Select Board does not have the power to control any of that. Yes, but it says, "A non-binding proper to be brought before said meeting," which means to be that it has to have something to pertain to the community or that the Select Board can take an issue with. And as it refers to federal and state level only, it is nothing the Select Board has control over. If you, as a person, wish to do something about it, that's fine. But as an organization, the Town of Hardwick is not legally able to do anything.
It did pass in Westminster somehow.
I can't hear you.
The Town of Westminster, Westminster passed this resolution.
That may be fine for them, but my call is that it is not germane to the Town of Hardwick. Carol, behind you, Robin.
Carol Goslin, I live in Hardwick, and I was just hoping to find out what's going on with the Swingin' Bridge.
The what?
Swinging Bridge.
Okay, but let's settle this one, and then we'll go back to the Swingin' Bridge. Any other comments on the, my ruling on the resolution?
My name is Ross Connolly, I live in Hardwick. I'm a Social Security recipient, and I also have Medicare. And so even though these come from the federal government, I think it's very local. There are many other people in this room and in the town who are also recipients of Social Security and Medicare. Medicaid is also very much a local issue. And whether or not the question is legality, I think we all, including the town, us as the town, can raise our voice and let it be known that we are concerned about these issues. So I would suggest, with all due respect, ORICE, that your ruling is avoiding the fact that these are local issues.
I will poll the audience. Those of you that feel this is something the town should be involved in, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay? I have been overruled, and the resolution, I didn't hear all of it, but it was made as a motion resolution. Is there a second to that? I have a second from Dave Shepherd. Any further discussion in regards to the resolution? And I believe it was directed to the Select Board. Hearing none, and I'm not going to try to repeat it, and I'm not going to ask her to reread that unless you need to. All those in favor of the resolution as previously read, please signify, and this is a non-binding suggestion to the Select Board. All those in favor of the resolution as read previously, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion is carried, and you can get a copy of that to the Select Board? Thank you. Any other business? David?
Wait, David, wait, wait, nobody has answered.
I just wanted to echo my support to ORICE for all the many community organizations she's been on and other moderator positions she's been on other than this group, and also recognize... also recognize Tom Fadden for all his service to the community, which this report was dedicated to. Just yesterday, I was witness to a car accident near my house, and I was attending to the person in the car, and Tom Fadden was driving by, and other cars drove by, and Tom stopped right away and asked if he could help, and he called the ambulance and the police department, and then came back and assisted, and so, I just wanted to recognize him.
Thank you. If you're ready, a motion to adjourn would be also appropriate, unless there's somebody else. Carol? And then over.
Carol Goslin, I just wanted to find out what's going on with the swing-in bridge.
Oh, yes, I forgot about that. I'm sorry. Update on the swinging bridge.
I'm trying to respond to three things. Paul Fix's comment about funds being handled inappropriately, if, so I believe OP took that. If I'm re-elected, I'll also follow up. I'm not totally sure that the, that the town offices can put restrictions on appropriations that were voted by the town for a certain organization, but maybe. Swinging Bridge, that project is scheduled, I believe we have plans. It's gone out to bid three times. I thought it was only twice it went out to bid. Three times it's gone out to bid, third time's the charm. We're about 200,000 shy. We do have grant application into, for a transportation alternatives grant at VTранz, and we're hopeful that we're going to get that project under construction. That'll be the, a new bridge and a new wall supporting Main Street right next to the bridge, because that's also damaged by the flood. So, we're hoping that happens this summer. There's a small window when getting in the river. One other update on another project. We have been looking, working on getting the fire department out of the flood. We were hoping and planning to bring preliminary plans to share with everybody today. That didn't quite happen, but we will shortly be sharing plans, draft plans, for a new fire department, rescue, and town highway garage on Creamery Road.
Any other, other business? A motion to adjourn would be nice. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Everybody's leaving. Thank you all.